Lead us in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to this special joint meeting of the Select Board of the Planning Commission to hear about the cell tower that we propose at Mark three. I'm going to open the Manchester Select Board meeting at this time. I'd like the planning to sing. I think you have one on the table and there's a button to push and when it goes green, it's a long time. There's a button on top of the mic and then you push it till it turns green. Thank you. So we had two sign-in sheets. I tried to remind people as they came in and if you want to speak, make sure your name is on that. After we give the presentation, we will entertain questions from both boards first and then questions from the audience. Questions will be limited to three minutes. We did that when the crowd was larger. We may not need to do that this evening. And we are going to procure ample hours this evening. And if you have heard your question answered, please try not to repeat. So right now I'm going to pass the representatives from Vertex Towers LLC and Bell and Land and Mobile Systems LLC come to the podium for their presentation.
Thank you.
Yep, you're good.
Uh, the mayor got murdered in the storm last year. He was suspended for all of Vertex in Volodymyr. Our home is scheduled to be suspended. Follow the petition January one, two. On Saturday, we get a three-part review project in the city of New Orleans. Father Paul, tell me she said he called thirty-four eight. I'm anxious. Um, fire vote tonight is the Public Utility Commission proceedings and Fran Parisi, sitting in the front row to your left there, is an attorney from Providence, Illinois, who was representing Vertex for many years throughout New England, and he will be giving the presentation tonight. Thank you.
With the cheers, I'd like to share my screen to give a presentation. Let folks can see it from the board here.
That's fine. Also, for people just arriving, please, if you plan to speak, sign the speaker sheet and everybody should sign the other signing sheet. And I'm happy now. Apparently I'm not going to turn this over. I would be smoking, keep going.
Good evening. My name is Francis Parisi. I work with a company called Vertex Towers. We are here tonight at the instruction of the Vermont law with respect to permitting a telecommunications facility. Because these type of facilities are exempt from local zoning, we are actually required to get what's called a certificate of public good from the Public Utilities Commission. But as part of that process, we seek input from the town of Manchester, and that's really what the purpose here is tonight. For those of you that were at the last public hearing, I was not here and I didn't get to give a presentation. So I apologize in advance if a lot of this is duplicative, but I'm going to treat this as if it's a new application and give a lot more detail so that we all understand what we're proposing here tonight. And then I'll highlight the changes as we go along from the original application. By way of introduction, Vertex Towers is what we call in the world a wireless infrastructure developer. We do not provide telecommunications service. We partner up with telecommunications companies to build wireless infrastructure. We've been very successful throughout all of New England. We do a lot of work in New Hampshire and Massachusetts. We've already built towers in Bennington, Vermont and Rochester, Vermont. We have about six or eight other similar projects throughout Vermont. We've built dozens of towers throughout Massachusetts and New Hampshire in a lot of areas that are equally challenging as Manchester. A lot of rural areas, a lot of more developed areas. We do a lot of work on Cape Cod, an equally sensitive area. And I think what we've done is we've come up with a team that's very thoughtful and very analytical with respect to wireless infrastructure site. We understand that there's a lot of concerns, but we engage a lot of professionals, engineers, radio frequency engineers, land use professionals. We consult with cities and towns to make sure we're doing things in an appropriate fashion. My suspicion is you've heard of Verizon before. Verizon is, I believe, the largest wireless carrier in the United States and provides some degree of service already here in the town of Manchester. They have been operating for over thirty years at this point. And in addition to Verizon, we have relationships with AT&amp;T and T-Mobile and all the other telecommunications companies because one of the things that your zoning bylaw requires is that these facilities are accommodating to multiple telecommunications companies and multiple telecommunications carriers. So we're in constant contact with AT&amp;T and T-Mobile and some of the other smaller regional players in the area to build facilities that are not only suitable for Verizon, but also for other telecommunications companies to make sure we're being thoughtful and building appropriate facilities. The, I hope I don't need to tell you about the benefits of wireless telecommunications. I suspect everybody here has a cellphone. I suspect we all use them. The statistics are actually quite staggering. Over fifty percent of American homes are now wireless only. They've cut the cord with the wireline to make sure that they're only connected via wireless telecommunications. Public safety actually requires, actually relies on telecommunications. More than eighty percent of nine-one-one calls throughout the United States are only made with wireless phones. And as things evolve in the world, people are telecommuting, tele-educating, and trying to work from home, educate from home, and getting away from the landline network that we've all enjoyed throughout Vermont and the company. And companies like Verizon Wireless are trying very hard to satisfy that demand and to bring better telecommunications to more developed areas like Manchester, but also more rural areas along the secondary and the tertiary roads throughout all of Vermont. We actually do a lot of work in equally rural areas in New Hampshire. We work very closely with a lot of New Hampshire public, you know, regional planning commissions. And New Hampshire has actually taken a very different approach than Vermont. They've recognized the great public safety need for better telecommunications, the great demand for telecommunications, you know. A lot of public safety officials, the police, fire, public access, also use the same networks that the commercial folks use, Verizon and AT&amp;T, to, as backup to their own radio network. So public safety is a, in a lot of ways, a partner to what we do to provide better public safety communications throughout all of Vermont. The, you know, as you know, we've been working on this site for a very long time. We have targeted an area in north Manchester. These are very low-powered facilities. We're not trying to cover all of Manchester with one site. We're not trying to cover all of southern Vermont. We're really trying to cover a very small area. And, and, you know, what we're trying to do is provide better coverage to what we call, what I would call, north Manchester, north of Manchester Center going towards Dorset, along the seven A corridor and the Route seven corridor and the other roads that go north into Manchester, into Dorset. And also the areas surrounding there. The Hunter Park where we are is a very heavily utilized facility at certain parts of the year. The other Thompson Park is a very heavily utilized facility. And in addition, Manchester Center is a very densely populated, high-demand area. So, and there are other tertiary roads, residential neighborhoods, and Town Hall, the Public Safety Complex, all that are big demand users for telecommunications. And so what we're trying to do is build better telecommunications networks for that area of Manchester. I tell you it's a low-powered facility because there's a real misconception with respect to these type of facilities. We're not designing a facility like a radio station to cover a very wide area. It covers a very small geographic area, and I'll go into more detail on that in a while. But the reason is, it's a two-way communication. This device is trying to talk to the nearest cellphone antenna and this, and the nearest cellphone antenna is trying to talk to this device. And when you're driving or walking or holding this up your head, this has to be a very low-powered communication. So the return is a very low-powered communication. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, we routinely broadcast out at about a hundred watts. And as comparison, AM radio, which is an older technology, but broadcasts out about fifty thousand watts because it's designed to cover a much greater area. So it's, this is a very low-powered type transmission to cover a very small area. And, and, and what Verizon is trying to do in this particular instance is, like I said, cover the northern area, which is not very well-covered, but also provide better service to Manchester Center, which is a more densely populated and more densely utilized area. I have lots of maps here, and it's kind of confusing because Verizon is a very mature type telecommunications company. They broadcast at a lot of different frequencies. They have various evolutions of technology. We've all heard about 3G and 4G and 5G. And what those are, are evolutions of technology, the third generation of technology, the fourth generation, and we're migrating into the fifth generation of technology. And what that means is that our phones do more. They, you know, when we first started designing these networks, we thought it was just going to be a telephone. And then we started doing text messaging, and then you can send a picture, and all of a sudden it's streaming video. And now it's high-speed data. And so that requires a larger footprint, a larger frequency range. It's the same technology that we've been using for a long time, but they're using a greater and a wider range of frequency and bandwidth. It's the same frequency that public safety, same bandwidth that public safety utilizes where there are public safety radios. It's the same thing that Wi-Fi, which we enjoy in this room right now. It's just there's different segregated frequencies for the different types of communications that Verizon and other telecommunications companies is designed to do. And as I'm sure you're aware, there's actually some coverage already in Manchester from existing facilities. There's an existing tower right at kind of the intersection of Route seven and Route thirty that you've probably never seen, but I'll tell you, it's closer to Route seven than Route thirty. But, you know, that has already Verizon antennas on it, has AT&amp;T antennas. I think it also has T-Mobile antennas on it, and that's been there for a very long time. And that provides what we call seven hundred megahertz, some of the older technology, low-band transmission. There's other facilities in Dorset, up at the top of the mountain, the ski mountain there, and other areas that provide some coverage as well. But the other thing that we're trying to do is provide a more reliable signal, a signal that not only works outdoors, but in your vehicle and also in your home, and also in a dense building like this library or Town Hall or a more, a dense structure. And it requires us, and the challenge that we have is that it's becoming a residential technology, but we don't want to cite them in residential neighborhoods. Your zoning bylaw precludes that. A lot of people want us to stay away from residences while still providing coverage to residential neighborhoods. So there's, you know, I have a whole lot of maps here. We'll go through them in greater detail. But as Verizon deploys higher frequency ranges to have more high-speed data and other capabilities, the downside of using some of the higher frequency bands is that the coverage from existing structures diminishes. So we need more and more sites to provide better coverage, again, to more residences, more densely populated buildings, but also to more people as well. And as you go into the higher frequencies, as we start deploying the 4G and the 5G networks, the existing facilities just don't provide much coverage at all and the footprint strength. So we, you know, we work with Verizon engineers, we work with our own independent radio frequency engineers to really analyze the coverage. The one benefit to, to this relationship that we have, we're a wireless infrastructure developer. Quite frankly, we're real estate developers. But, and we can be more thoughtful. We can, you know, I know AT&amp;T was in town a year or two ago and they proposed something that I wouldn't have chosen. You know, when I look at that site, that didn't make sense to me. And it made sense to the radio frequency engineers. It made sense to AT&amp;T, but it didn't really make sense to the real estate professionals and the other people that drive around and look at available sites and look at your zoning bylaw. And so, you know, we spent, we've spent a lot more time looking at existing land use, your zoning bylaw, other, other factors to have a compromise between the radio frequency engineers and the land use professionals and your zoning bylaw. We've focused on four ten Hunter Park Road. We've been working with the landowner there for quite a few years to find an appropriate location. It's, it represents kind of a compromise because, quite frankly, the radio frequency engineers want to be closer to Manchester Center. But when you look at land use around Manchester Center, more densely populated, more smaller lots, a lot more commercial activity, and harder to set these type of facilities off from all the different land uses there. You know, but at the same time, I can't go, you know, way out of town or up on top of the hill because the objective is really that Manchester Center north to the Dorset border. So we spent a lot of time looking at various opportunities, various options. In order to have a viable site, we've got to have a willing landowner. We've got to have some utility infrastructure. They require electricity and basic telecommunications infrastructure. We need access. We need to make sure that we don't infringe upon wetlands or other conservation restrictions. So we need to make sure that it is set back from other uses, residential uses and things like that. So, you know, we struggle to find the compromise between what the radio frequency engineers want and what the land use professionals and the folks like the planning commission and the select board are charged to do. And we think we found actually a very good solution here. We've, the Hunter Park is owned by a community service organization. So quite frankly, we pay rent and we have plenty of private landlords that would love to take our money, but they're not necessarily in appropriate locations. So we've been speaking with the folks that are on the ice rink in the Hunter Park, which is not the town of Manchester, but a private organization that manages Hunter Park. And they were very willing to talk to us. One, because they get the benefit of the economics here, but also that they really felt that this was an appropriate location for this type of facility, given everything else that's going on in the area. The other thing that we do is, you know, we look at available infrastructure. We don't like to build towers. Your zoning bylaw, even though it's not applicable here, tells us to make sure we're exhausting other tall structures. But, you know, you folks live in Manchester, there's not a lot of towers or tall buildings or water tanks or anything else that we could utilize for wireless infrastructure. As an industry, we've been very creative. I've been participating in antennas in church steeples and in other tall buildings and other, you know, in more urban areas and water tanks and other things. But as you drive around Manchester, given all the height restrictions in your zoning bylaw and given all the other restrictions on land use development, there really aren't a lot of tall structures here, other than the existing tower, again, right along Route seven, that is already utilized by various telecommunications companies. The other thing that we look at is your zoning bylaw. And I want to understand, your zoning bylaw isn't applicable here. And the reason it's not is because we're regulated by the Vermont State Public Utilities Commission. We have to get it with certificate of public good. So even though I, as a real estate professional, look at your zoning bylaw, it's not applicable. We are not restricted by the zoning bylaw. However, I, as a real estate professional, take your zoning bylaw very seriously. We look at land use. We look at where we're allowed to go and where we're not allowed to go. We're, we're in what's called a mixed-use zone, mixed-use two, which, which is not residential, it's not commercial, it's not industrial, it's kind of the confluence of those type of zoning districts. But when you look at the area that we're proposing, we're right up against and what's called the office industrial zone. We actually tried to go in that zone, which I'll show you in a few minutes, but we weren't able to find a lot in that zone. But we could have gone into that, had we been able to, it would have been a permitted zone. We actually could have gone into what's called a rural agricultural zone, which in this town is bigger lots and more agricultural. But if you look at land use, those tend to be the farms where there's no trees, nothing to mitigate the visibility of these type of facilities. And it's also a residential zone. So, you know, we, we struggled very hard to find something that was appropriate for the town of Manchester, given all the different land use restrictions. But, and what's interesting is that this is a zone in which a communications antenna is a permitted use, but the tower itself is not, which doesn't quite make sense because you need to attach the antenna to something. But if we were able to find a tall building or a tall church steeple or a water tank in this zone, we wouldn't even have to go to the town. We could have gotten it by right. So, but, but because, and it would have been a much less extensive permitting process at the Public Utilities Commission. But because we're building the tower itself, a taller structure, which has great benefit for a lot of reasons, which we're talking about, we're required to get the certificate of public good from the Public Utilities Commission. The, and even, even though, wrong way here.
We're sorting out the slides. If you haven't signed in and you'd like to speak, there's a sign-in sheet for speakers and everybody should have signed into the, all sign-in sheet as well.
And even though I say we're not subject to the, the town zoning ordinance with respect to telecommunications facilities, because these type of facilities are regulated by the public utility, the state Vermont Public Utilities Commission, we look at it very carefully. One of the, if, if we weren't exempt and had to go through the local zoning process, there are a great deal of restrictions on where these facilities can go and not go and how they have to be designed. One of the requirements is that it not be on undevelopable land, which this site is because of the existing ice rink and an existing solar facility, another utility-type facility. We're nowhere near a historic district. We're not within three hundred feet of any residential use. We're not in the flight path of any, any airstrip. And we actually understand that there's a helicopter pad at the public safety complex. And so we've gotten clearance from the FAA that this is not going to have an impact on air navigation. One of the zoning bylaw requirements is that it facilitates co-location. Even though Verizon is a co-applicant, we've designed it with the height and the structural integrity to accommodate other telecommunications companies. We've already spoken to AT&amp;T and they're, they're working with us in this particular area. We work with T-Mobile and others. So we build it very thoughtfully so that we're not building it just for Verizon, so that when AT&amp;T comes back to Manchester, they're not looking for somewhere else because they didn't, weren't able to co-locate on this facility. We're not in any kind of environmentally sensitive area. Because these facilities are federally licensed, they're also subject to a lot of federal regulations and restrictions. And we have to go through a very extensive environmental due diligence to make sure we don't have any impact on the environment. And that, and the environment is a very broad word. We need to make sure that we don't have any impact on plant and wildlife species. We have to make sure we have no impact on Native American resources. We have to make sure we don't have any impact on wetlands or migratory bird flight paths. And so we do a very extensive regulation, due diligence, to make sure that we comply with all those federal regulations, in addition to the local and the state regulations. Your zoning bylaw puts a height restriction of a hundred and thirty feet. And quite frankly, when we came to town the last time, we proposed something a hundred and forty feet, which is what the radio frequency engineer said. It provides a little bit better coverage, it provides more co-locatable space. But that was one of the objections that the planning commission and the select board made in the last one, that it didn't comply with the zoning bylaw. So we've lowered the height so that, again, even though we're not subject to the zoning bylaw, we're in compliance with it. There's no lighting required. We, we try very hard not to build facilities that require lighting for FAA purposes. One, because once you turn it on, you have to leave it on so it becomes a maintenance issue and we don't want to have to change the light bulb. But also, it's something that, you know, folks have expressed concern with. We, so we try very hard to make sure that it doesn't require lighting, and in this case, it doesn't require lighting at all. One of the requirements is that we minimize the visual impact, which I think we have here. The lot itself is twenty acres. It's surrounded by a vegetative buffer on all sides. You can't see the rink from the street, other than from Hunter Park Road, but you can't see it from seven A or Main Street. You can't see it from the other street, Bennett Street beside the street on the left. So, you know, it, and you're not going to see the fence or the compound or anything from these locations. So I think we've actually picked a location that minimizes the visual impact as much as possible. And again, taking advantage of the existing vegetation and land use around it. The, and, and like I said, we're in, we're in what's called the, we're in what's called the mixed-use district, which, when you look at the zoning bylaw, it actually kind of dovetails with what we're trying to do here. It's, this is a type of facility, this is a type of zone that's supposed to foster economic development, to provide opportunities for other businesses. And this is kind of a business use. It's also to make sure that there's no impact on congestion or traffic. These facilities are unmanned, so that it'll, there'll be about six weeks of construction activity. This is a relatively easy site to build because the access road is already there. The facility is relatively clear and level. So after construction, maybe six weeks, there'll be no traffic at all. They're unmanned. There's no trucks. Maybe someone will come by once a month, make sure the fence is intact. But as electronics get better, they're more remotely monitored, so people don't even have to come to tweak the antennas or anything like that. And also, the purpose of the zone is to provide a quality streetscape and pedestrian-friendly. We're thousands of feet off of seven A, off of Main Street. We're, you know, so, you know, we have no impact on pedestrians, no impact on, on the streetscape, the, the main street corridor. The lot itself is about twenty acres. It, there's the ice rink, a very large parking lot, there's a solar field, and so, but for perspective, if you pull into the ice rink parking lot, we're right next to the solar field, so up to the, the north side of the parking lot. We had explored other places with the landowner to see if we could maybe go other places on the land. We had actually looked to go behind the ice skating rink, but because of some development restrictions with the way the land was deeded to the, the ice rink, we weren't able to go there. And we felt that that even would be more visible, given the land use along Main Street. We had actually talked about moving it farther north into the industrial zone. There's a large sand and gravel pit to the north there, and we talked to those landowners. And we couldn't find an appropriate place that didn't impact their business operations and would also be less visible than we've already picked. That lot to the north actually butts the Gulf driving range. And as you can see, the driving range is actually very visible from Main Street. And, and also there are farms that have been And also, there are farms that have been cleared to the north there. So we're trying to, so by setting it where we've done, we take advantage of the vegetative buffer, both onsite, on the gravel pit.
Can you point to where it's on then? A minute.
It's going to be right up here. So, as you come in, Main Street, Hunter Park Drive, this is all existing, this is a narrow corridor. We'll utilize this access road, and we'll just boost up the facility right there. So, from an access standpoint, it's very favorable. We don't have to build an access driveway. There's already existing utility infrastructure, power on the site. We're right up against a solar farm, another utility use, and we abut a sand and gravel, and not a residential neighborhood.
Isn't there a soccer field there?
We're going to bring in the facility until after the presentation.
But, the Hunter Park actually extends, there is a soccer field complex right in here. It's still part of the Hunter Park complex, it's the same landowner. And we'd actually talked about putting it over there, but again, it would have been far more visible from Route 30. So, you know, we've been working with this landowner for quite a while to find appropriate location that minimized the visual impact, doesn't have any impact on their existing land use, or the park itself, while still putting it on park property. Because as I said, they're going to get the rent from this, as opposed to any other site in town, any other private landlord. The facility itself is just a 50 by 50 fenced in, so 2,500 square feet. This room is three times the size of that. And it's tucked in right behind, next to the solar field, so there's a 50 by 50 fence. Again, this is all treed in here, and we utilize the existing access road. We type this out for just legal purposes, but all this is your existing paid portion of the parking lot. So what we're constructing is about 20 feet of driveway and 50 by 50 compound. From our perspective, that's as minimal as you can get. Oftentimes, we have to be set back, or, you know, in this case, we're 1,000 feet off of Main Street, but we're able to utilize the existing access road, which minimizes the amount of construction and disturbance. It, you know, even though we're not in the office-industrial zone, we're immediately abut it. We, you know, the nearest residential use is well over 1,000 feet away, going closer to Main Street, and then thousands of feet away if you go on the other side of Main Street. But I think, from a sighting perspective, it actually makes sense. It really does comply with your zoning bylaw as much as possible. The, like I said, the compound itself is just a 50 by 50 square foot fence, which will have a telecommunications tower, and a small equipment pad, in which Verizon will put telecommunications equipment. The one good thing about telecommunications equipment is that it's evolving in a good way. The equipment itself is getting smaller. When we first, when I first started doing this many years ago, folks like Verizon would have to big, build, build big equipment shelters. And they used to have to be cooled, because there was electronic equipment inside, and those cooling fans made noise that some people found objectionable. Now, we utilize, Verizon utilizes cabinets that are about the size of a refrigerator, with a fan about the size of your refrigerator, so that it doesn't generate any noise anymore. They're weatherproof cabinets that houses all the equipment, they're very secure. We build a chain-link fence with some barbed wire, just to prevent unauthorized access. But the sites themselves are very safe, and designed to be in much more remote areas, so that they're with safety in mind. But, and like I said, this is existing pavement right here, so they're really constructing about 20 feet of, you know, new impervious surface. And this is actually not even impervious, so this is a gravel driveway. The compound itself is a gravel compound. So the increase in impervious surface is a 10 by 20, 200 square foot pad, and a foundation for the tower. So it's from an increased impervious surface, it's de minimis. And we can actually control any kind of storm-water runoff to go into the gravel that will surround The tower itself, and this is a chain from the last tower, our last proposal, we're proposing.
Can you hold on one minute? Can you, you can do this, might as well take this.
How do I do this? The tower itself will be 130 feet tall, which is in compliance with your zoning bylaw. The, what, these towers tend to be what we call vertical totem poles, where different telecommunications companies, starting off with Verizon, and then AT&amp;T, and then T-Mobile, will co-locate their antennas. The antennas need to be separated, generally about 10 feet, that's the rule of thumb, to prevent interference between the different telecommunications companies. But then the other thing which we'll do, and I'll get into much better pictures, is we're going to camouflage the facility to look what we call a fake pine tree, a monopine, is what we call it. It's a, and I think that was another concern that was expressed at the last select board meeting, with just the design itself, that it looked too much like a cell tower. So, these facilities are also, once we get approved by the Public Utilities Commission, we go back and do much more extensive engineering, we do subsurface investigation, we design a foundation that's very specific to the area. I don't know what's underground yet, but we will find out, and then design a very specific foundation. And the design criteria are very location-specific. We live in Manchester, this site will be in Manchester, which has very specific weather patterns, and winds, and so, we get very location-specific designs to make sure that they are very safe. They're very over-engineered. So, and I think the facility that's in, existing on Route 7, is an older-type facility, much closer to Route 7, but, you know, has withstood all of the weather that you guys get up here in Manchester. And, I don't want to say trust me, I have much better pictures, this is just an engineered rendition. We have several photos and photo simulations further on in the presentation. And the last thing I got to say, like I said earlier, these are very low-powered facilities. If your zoning bylaw actually encourages us to put them on existing structures, including existing buildings, and, which are maybe occupied residentially or commercially, I've done work throughout all of New England, and I did a work with the city of Worcester, Massachusetts, a couple of years ago, where we put similar antennas on the top of every public housing building in the city of Worcester, because those tended to be the tallest buildings in Worcester. I've put, in a lot of communities, the local hospital is the tallest building. And as you drive throughout New England, every hospital building in New England has similar antennas on the roof, because they tend to be the tallest structures in the area. I go to a church that has a very large steeple, and in the steeple, we put two different sets of antennas, one for Verizon and one for T-Mobile, because it's the tallest steeple in the area. It's about 150 feet tall. So, and the reason I tell you all that is because, again, they're designed to be very compliant with FCC regulations. The federal government is very involved in wireless infrastructure siting, for a variety of reasons, one to ensure safety. And there's been an immense amount of studies done at the federal level, and they have very strict limits, they're very limited power output. And I told you earlier, because it's a two-way communication, but it's also designed to comply with applicable FCC limits with respect to radio frequency exposure. And these, even if we were to put multiple sets of antennas, you know, they routinely come in at, you know, 1%, 2%, 3% of federal standards. The other benefit of this type of facility is that we're set back substantially from residential uses, Main Street, and more populated areas, and we're also 130 feet in the air. And the lower you bring it, the closer you bring it to people. So, we also design structures that not only satisfy the radio frequency engineers, but make the antennas farther away from people, which, in order to comply with exposure limits in that regard. And we have lots of data, you know, showing what this tower will do, and what the coverage it'll provide to, at all the different frequency bands. Unfortunately, it doesn't play well on this, but, you know, it's, again, it's not designed to cover all of, this is what this, just this facility will do, at the fourth generation, the 4G, what they call personal communication services bandwidth. As you get into the higher bandwidths, the more high-speed data, it provides some benefit to the parks and to Route 7, but again, it's not designed to cover the whole area. And then when you dovetail the existing coverage, first proposed coverage, it really provides a, you know, a pretty ubiquitous signal from Manchester Center going up north, 7A into Dorset.
Is that what those colors mean, please?
Yes, absolutely. As I said earlier, there's different degrees of signal. When you're standing outside, there's no impediment to the telecommunications signal. When you're in a vehicle, that has a little bit of a structural impediment to a telecommunications signal. When you're in a building, like a residence, or like this library, that's a greater structural impediment. So what the different colors mean are the different thresholds that the engineers look at, to see how well the signal will work. The yellow is the strongest quality signal. You'll get very good quality signal at in-b buildings, in businesses, in residences, you know, from Manchester Center north going into Dorset. The green represents a less quality signal. It might work in your vehicle, along the roads, but it might not penetrate a building, or a commercial building. And the blue is where you get a much more reliable outdoor signal. And so, as you can imagine, as you're closer to the tower, you're going to get a much better quality signal. And as you go into the higher frequency bands, the more higher data, you know, again, the coverage footprint shrinks, but, you know, the real demand for what we call in-building coverage is the Manchester Center, you know, to this site, the public safety complex, Town Hall, and then, you know, it kind of dissipates till you get to Dorset. So, you know, we, as we get into the higher frequency ranges, the more high-speed data, the coverage shrinks, but then also the need shrinks, because we're trying to be as close to where people are and phone users are. And then, last week, we conducted what's called a visibility demonstration, we put a balloon up in the air. We're not required to do it, we do it as a courtesy. I put an ad in the paper, I notified all the butters, we did as best we could, I notified the town manager, I saw the notice on the town's website. We tried to get out the word as best as possible. It's not a site visit. I was actually in town, I was driving around, I drove around about 50 different streets and towns. I also engage engineers, I don't prepare these photos myself, we engage engineers that certify that the balloon was 130 feet in the air. So, and then what we can do is take pictures of where the site was visible, and where the site wasn't visible. And that was the whole purpose of the visibility demonstration, to see whether or not people could see it from their particular properties. Hold on, I'm going to jump to the board. We, we engage professionals that just do this for a living, they certify that the balloon was at 130 feet in the air, they certify that the pictures are accurate. And what they do is they drive around at different vantage points. They can actually kind of sort of predict with topography maps where there might be some visibility, where there isn't some visibility, and, you know, as, and I'll go through all each of these photos, but you tend to get visibility close up in these particular areas, you're going to see it from the parking lot of the ice rink. But as you get farther away, you don't see it, you're not going to see it from Manchester Center, you're not going to see it from most of the vantage points along Main Street. You're, and what these numbers represent are the different photos that we'll scroll through. The red's meaning no visibility, the green meaning some visibility. Your zoning bylaw does not use the word invisible. I can't make an invisible tower, I've tried to buy an invisibility cloak, it doesn't work. You know, and the requirement is to minimize the visibility as much as possible, and I really think that we've done that. In addition, I know there was some photographs shown at the last meeting, by lowering it 10 feet, it actually reduced the number of places that it was visible from. Because there were some places that, you know, everyone thinks you're building a 130-foot tower, you're going to see a 130-foot tower all over town. But in reality, there were some places, you could only see the top of the tower above the trees. And by reducing it 10 feet, we actually reduced the number of places where it was visible. In addition, we, by camouflaging it, we find tree branches, it becomes less visible to people who can see it, because you're looking at tree branches amongst other tree branches. So...
What do you do, tie them on?
What's that?
What do you do with the tree branches? Tie them on to the tree?
No, it's actually, it, well, let me, hold on, that's a good question, and I'll answer it. This is taken from the parking lot of the ice rink. We know it's going to be visible from the ice rink. But what we do, it's actually very engineered. The pole itself is built with slots for branches to go in, the, unfortunately, we're never going to make this look like an artificial Christmas tree, because as the branches go farther out, they tend to droop. So we can go out about 10 feet, so, but, and...
So, we're being awake until after. We'll never get any of the questions answered, forget it.
And, the one, the good and bad of making it look like a fake tree, is there's some vantage points like this, where it's probably not the best view, but as you look through the other photographs, it actually looks, this is taken from Pig Pen Road, the soccer fields right next to, on, at Hunter Park, and you can see the balloon just above the trees. And then when you add the branches to it, that's what you're going to see. You're not, you're seeing, and that, what that tells me is you're seeing about 10 feet of tower, and the branches tend to blend in. So this is actually a view where the camouflaging it to look like a tree actually helps. We took photographs from the Town Hall parking lot, and, actually, no, this is the temple next to Town Hall. And this is one location where there was some visibility with the tower at 140 feet, but the balloon, the tower is no longer visible from the temple parking lot, or from the temple property, because of the lowering height. So I believe they had expressed some concern at the last meeting. This is taken from the front of the public safety and the Town Hall complex, right along Main Street. And again, the tower can be back in there. And everyone's going to say, well, you did the photos when the leaves are on the trees. And actually, if you think about it, the, this area is so heavily forested, that the leaves actually don't, aren't the vegetative buffer, it's actually the tree itself and the branches. When you look up, you know, you don't see rock when you look up the hills to the mountains, you see tree foliage, even though there's not leaves on it. So, you know, we truly believe that, and this is another location where lowering it 10 feet actually reduced the visibility. And then we drove around quite a few places. This is taken from the entrance to the Mobile Home Park, right next door, and you can see the dense foliage that's there. I drove the whole length of the Mobile Home Park, which is private property, you're not supposed to do that, but I went in there all the way, and, you know, you cannot see the balloon from that, from that area. This is taken from farther down Route 30, right at the, probably the intersection of Pig Pen Road and Route 30. And again, you see the top, this is telling me you're seeing about 30 feet of tower, maybe 40 feet of tower, so not 150 feet, 130 feet. And then it does also extend above the backdrop. So what the green backdrop and the brown, you know, will serve as a mitigating factor to mitigate the visibility as much as possible. And then, you know, we took lots of other photographs, West Street, about 4 tenths of a mile away, no visibility. This is taken from the, the parking lot of the, I think it's, this is the parking lot of the, the track, the track, and there's no visibility. There's another photo that, this is taken from the parking lot... There's another photo that, this is taken from the parking lot of the, by the softball, of the baseball field. You can see the balloon right there. So, you know, you're gonna see some bit of tower. So when you're seeing about 10 feet of tower, but, you know, by adding the branches, it really blends in with the existing tree canopy.
Let me ask you a quick question. I just believe you, you want us to be finishing by seven, just about seven minutes away?
Yeah.
So that we can enter the questions.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Okay, great.
And then, like I said, we, you know, we drove all around town, Mending Walls Road. No visibility to the balloon, therefore no visibility to the tower. Route 30, up by, I'm not sure where this is. Is this the...
30 rec.
Yeah, the, the entrance to the rec. There's no visibility to the tower. Bonnet Street, you know, there was, there's an existing house like right down here. It looks like it just got built. And, you know, the tower comes in right behind the trees there, but again, not above the tree, not above the skyline. So I think that's another place where adding the tree branches actually helps the visibility. Farther down Main Street by the, by, you're looking, you're looking south from north. No visibility. By North Ronridge, North Ridge Run, no visibility. Mount ALS Lane, no visibility. You know, we took about 30 photographs, but, and I can provide this to the town. They can post on the website after we, tonight. By Bonnet Street, up at Bonnet Street, and by Green Mountain Road, no visibility. Bonnet Street farther north, about, I'd get 75, .75 miles away, no visibility. Highland Ave, no visibility. Richfield Road, no visibility. This looks like the Memorial Ave. You have the class school, no visibility. Farther down Route 30. As you get farther away, you lose visibility. There was one site, I'm just gonna skip to it. Way down Main Street, about .9 miles away, there was, you know, you see it, it's in, you know, but, you know, you can see, it starts to dissipate from your, your visibility as you get. This is almost, almost a mile away. And that was really one of the only sites on Main Street as you're headed south from Dorset, looking towards the facility. Flarnham Hill Road, closer to downtown, Main Street, where the gas station is, no visibility. So we, I think, and, and like I said, I can provide these photographs to the town manager. You can put them up on the website. I think, from a visibility perspective, I think we've done what the zoning bylaw asked us to do, which is to minimize the visibility as much as possible. And then the last thing I'm gonna say to wrap up, I, the, these facilities are very heavily federally regulated. We have a lot of federal requirements that we need to comply with. In addition, they're very heavily federally encouraged by the federal government. About 20, almost 30 years ago, the federal government adopted a very comprehensive telecommunications bylaw. And it was at the time when we only had one telecommunications company. And they broke up, you know, AT&amp;T into multiple regional telecommunications companies. They issued lots of different wireless licenses. And the whole point of it was to encourage competition so that we had multiple telecommunications options, both wired and wireless, and multiple wireless companies. And the federal government has, has essentially said that towns don't have to say no, yes. But they can't say no without good reason. They can't have the effect of prohibiting telecommunications. They can't say, we don't want it. They can also say, well, my phone works and I got an AT&amp;T phone, so therefore we don't need Verizon. They can't discriminate amongst carriers. And, and there's been an immense amount of litigation throughout the entire United States, going all the way up to the Supreme Court, just basically, and again, not replacing your local judgment, but supplementing your local judgment to say, is this the right location? Is this the, does it comply with your land use restrictions and other law processes? The, you know, does it, does a denial have the effect of prohibiting telecommunications? If there was a really obvious place right next door and you had a willing landlord saying, I'd love to have a tower on my property, that might be grounds to deny. But, or if we were near a school or a residential use or something like that. There, there's been cases that say, you know, there, there are grounds to deny. But in this particular case, where thousands of feet from residential uses, where, where in an area that's already developed and right next to a solar and another utility structure, it's, it's really hard to say no to this type of facility. In addition, the government has done an immense amount of testing because they regulate the frequency ranges and the power output that these type of facilities can operate under. You know, boards can't say, we don't like it because of the perceived health effects of these type of facilities. The government has deemed this safe. We need to show compliance with federal regulations and limits, which we can handily do. But, you know, you know, and, and I understand people struggle with that. We're equally conscious about safety, which is why we try to move it away from residential neighborhoods. Try to move it away from other high-use structures like schools and things like that. But, but, and I know this board has been counseled by its own council. You know, towns just can't say, we don't want it in town because we think it might be bad. And so, town, and I, and I know the, the planning board, I mean, the, the Planning Commission and the Select Board are very conscious of their requirements. So at that point, I'd like to, ultimately, what we're looking here is just to present this to the town. I think the town has the opportunity to comment to the Public Utilities Commission. We would love a positive recommendation from the Select Board and the, the Planning Commission because we believe that not only is there great benefit, there's no detriment. And this is really the, the most appropriate location for this type of facility in the town of Manchester. So we would ask, respectfully ask that the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission and the Select Board make a positive recommendation so that we can move forward to the, the Public Utilities Commission. Do you want me to stand up here and answer questions or just sit down?
I think, I think you should stay right there.
Yep.
Maybe sit down for a second to get, you know, to get a rest. Thank you for that. And I think we'll start with questions from the Planning Commission and followed by a question from the Select Board.
I'm going to read a statement that...
Just pick up, please.
You might want to hold that, yeah.
I'm gonna read a statement that might be helpful. The Manchester Planning Commission is aware of the need to improve internet coverage in the greater center of those areas. The current proposed location for Verizon's cell tower at Highway 8 is not acceptable. It is not conforming to zoning for that area. We would like to encourage Verizon to look at other sites. Some possible suggested locations are Fairtown Road, Richfield Road, the Cross now, Eupenax Highness, behind and above Southern Monarch Center. The town management is committed to assisting Verizon in finding suitable locations. I'd like to say a couple of things about what Mr. Brees said today. Have you done an FAA 746B application?
I don't know the answer to that. I, we, we can do database, and I think we might have. We will do it as part of the regulatory process. We do do it. I can't tell you that we have or have not done it. But we can do database research to make sure that we do have no impact on air navigation. But private construction, we would certainly, certainly be quiet.
I'm a certified applied instructor of commercial pilot and I also was used to be involved in a 55th operation of Benfica. And I checked with that operation and the ownership of that operation. Well, of course, I, and talked to the FAA. It's a highly, highly likely that this contract will live because if you lose that, there's a few of pay lands on the emergency road surface. So I, I do agree with that statement that you say that it does have to be right. Would you be willing to share with us your RF documentation of how you determine where you want to be in Manchester?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And we'll, in that, we'll show you all kind of locations that you would want that.
Yes.
Well, if you can get that mic a little closer to, so that we can hear you.
I also take, can you move this, this auto, speak to Jonathan. Jonathan, I asked, I asked for some pictures to be shown. Is it possible for you to put them up there? I went to take a look at the Dorset Tower because it's exactly the same thing as what you're proposing. And it's stunning when you see it. It's, if we can get it up there.
Give her a response, one second.
It's, it's, it's huge. I mean, the building itself is about the size of this room. And the tower itself is huge and it stands out, yet it is up against a forest. So it's not as visible as what you're gonna see at the high tier. What you're gonna see at the high tier is, is going to be significantly impactful. And the light that you're gonna have, that's the tower. The building at the bottom of the tower is the size of this room. There it is. And it's, it's gonna be impactful. And to say that it's not, and to say that it's not gonna be visible, I just don't think is, is accurate. And I, I have a problem with that. There's visual impact. There's, there's the vegetation, there's a vegetation backdrop there. It's almost as tall as that tower, so you don't really see it. In this case, there's no vegetation at all at the high tier and above solar grounds. It's gonna be very impactful. That's, that's my statement. I hope it tells me more.
Brad, you said, you stated that it's gonna be, the height of it's gonna be 130 feet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, from where I can see it was located, it was located up on the hill above the parking lot, about 15 feet above the parking lot, which really makes it, from where we're all standing, it's gonna be 145 feet, you know, visually, from where most people walk through here.
I understand, I don't think it's 15 feet, but it, but it's, it's definitely, definitely higher elevation, yes.
So it's not really visually 130 feet, visually seen, it's gonna be higher.
Well, it's 130 feet above ground level. That's all I can measure.
Okay. All right. No questions?
Okay. Select Board, do you have a question? Anyone? Okay, we'll open it up to the public. And if you have something, Scott, do we have that list? Or Jonathan, maybe Brad again? Tina Victor. And...
Do I stand over there or stand here?
Jonathan, stand right over there.
Okay. So, and, whoops.
Let him do. Hold that right up there. If he's done again.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So where we allow cell towers in Manchester is a decision that will have lasting consequences. We can't be short-sighted and judge this matter on superficial merits. Yes, connectivity for businesses and safety purposes is an important and legitimate concern. But if the town's connectivity issues can be solved in a different location, that's not an unreasonable ask. Protecting our quality of life and beautiful beauty is the top priority. Thankfully, we have protected zoning and other restrictions provided by our town plan. Are we going to allow giant commercial telecom infrastructure to be put anywhere regardless of what the town plan stipulates? Our town plan was approved through democratic process because the majority wanted it so. And U2 zoning districts don't allow telecommunications towers. Why is the will of the people being ignored? There are also long-term potential health effects from cell tower radiation exposure. Cell tower companies such as Crown Castle can't obtain insurance. In their 10K filings, they admit to anticipating future legal actions stemming from exposure harms. Every cellphone has in its setting, has in its setting legal disclosure language that warns the user to keep the phone out of particular distance from the body. There's a school, a mobile home community, the rank itself, the popular rail trail, and many playing fields that all fall within 500 meters or 1640 feet of the proposed tower. A New Hampshire commission of experts on technology and radiation determined 500 meters was the minimum safety set back from a cell tower. Now there are picnic tables out front where the summer camp children gather. Would you want your children or grandchildren picnicking under a cell tower? Given this, we need to maintain our proactive precautionary steps. The photos from last week's balloon test demonstrate how this industrial tower would dwarf anything surrounding it. In a few years, it would resemble the tower just off Highway 7 by Loretta Avenue with up to five additional carriers and possibly flashing lights at night. This is not what our community benefactors, leaders, and supporters had in mind when our beautiful recreation and cultural center, or either rank the Hunter Park, was envisioned and created. To our governing boards, please continue to oppose a cell tower at this location. The stakes are too high and there are other locations available. And I'd just like to add, because you mentioned how the FCC is apparently on top of, you know, exposure levels. They were sued in 2021 and the judge in the DC Circuit ordered the FCC to review over 11,000 papers submitted showing biological harm. Basically, the FCC is not minding the store. They are not up to date with what has been determined. The 1996 Telecommunications Act is obsolete. It's over a quarter of a century old. And what existed then compared to what exists now, there's far more technology out there now.
We reached our limits.
Okay, I'm almost done. Then I wanted to say, Attorney Sullivan said at the last meeting, they had no plans for 5G at this time. And yet, when I looked at the plans for this tower, it includes MIMO antenna, and you mentioned 5G. And at a meeting several years back, maybe even 10 years ago, Senator Blumenfeld asked some telecom reps if they had any safety testing on 5G. And they all looked at each other and then basically said, no, they haven't.
Okay, we're gonna move on to Sylvia Doleb.
Anyway, Senator Blumenfeld...
No, we're moving on. Okay? If we, if we wind up at this time, at the end, we can, I wanna make sure we get...
And remember, Pitsky, that's my last remark. The poor pig limb concealed within, like, portrait by a tower there. And you see the town. It's not funny.
If we have time at the end of...
I'm not gonna hold this. I'll just try and...
I wanna make sure everybody gets their hands...
Okay, I'm gonna speak with everybody. I'm sorry. If I can remember my notes here. I, I just think this tower is planned too near a main entry road into town. And therefore, many of the months of the year is gonna be very visible. This time of year, with many of the photographs for this presentation, we have full green foliage. That isn't true mostly here. We have October, November, December, January, February, March, and April. We have about seven months where we don't have much foliage at all. The trees are there, but no leaves, which makes a big difference. And I'm not against having the tower. I just think we should find a better place for it. I don't know how many towers are necessary. And that makes the, for the question, is it really needed at this time? Can it be put off for a couple of years and then we think about a, a location at that time? We could use some of the information that was gathered for this presentation. But hopefully, we wouldn't have the tower being put up until a later date. And then we could reevaluate and maybe come up with a better location. Maybe not. I think that's basically what I had to say. And one thing with these lectures, as a former teacher, you know, it's better to have questions by taking a break every now and again and say, does anybody have any questions on what I just presented to you? And if not, then go on to the next part of your presentation and try to make the whole presentation at once. And then, you know, it gets sort of foggy. You can't recollect as accurately as you could have done if it was ever... You can't recollect as accurately as you could have done if it was ever a little different. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia, Mary Ireland. Uh, Mary, hold on one second. How many people on Zoom, raise your hand on Zoom? Can we go to Zoom? Does anybody want to say anything on Zoom? I need to have a minute of my thinking time left. Put her now, it's okay, all right. Take, take it away.
All right, um, since there's no one on Zoom, um, if I go over three minutes, I'd like.
We'll, we're gonna, we're gonna keep you to three initially, and then if we have time at the end, we'll turn it back.
Because I need to speak for people who have electromagnetic sensitivity. All right? Pardon.
I, I'm gonna keep you to three minutes like everybody else. And if we have time, we'll, we'll, we'll go back.
That's about the point, John. Um, I find the presentation not convincing with exaggerations and um, diminishments. For instance, this room does not have 2500 square feet. All right? Not anywhere near. And so the site of the tower is going to pick up a lot more space than this does. Not to mention the area. Now, um, I thought I would be the last person to speak about the appearance. I saw the picture in the journal. It was explicitly everyday, beautiful. Mountains, sky, trees. If the tower is put there, it totally changes the ambience, both electromagnetically and visually. And if we're not cared enough to keep, you know, signs, uh, billboards off the highways, we can do better as far as sighting. You don't want a sight in the field because it will be visible. Well, how is that? Which is what you're trying to do here. And the other thing, of course, the most important thing. You talk about penetrating waves. They not just penetrate walls, they penetrate bodies. And if I had my extra minutes, I would tell you, it's like, it's very painful. Our children, our children are going to be right underneath that tower, less than a quarter of a mile away from residences. Of people who are not here tonight because it's not a home park. Where is the social justice? It's not. But again, our children, our children, me, and we.
And you, uh, Steve Barry.
Uh, Mr. Frisay, were you involved with the Pittsburgh Massachusetts Horizon?
Steve, Steve, we need you. We need you to use the mic because we've got people on Zoom.
Were you involved with the Pittsburgh Massachusetts Horizon Plan?
Not personally, no.
Do you know what happened in Pittsburgh, Massachusetts with Verizon?
Yes, I did.
Do you represent Verizon?
I don't hear, I represent Vertex Towers, but I'm familiar, there's a lot of news that was generated by Pittsburgh.
Do you know what has happened to the residents of Pittsburgh due to the towers in Pittsburgh?
I know that tower is in the air and broadcasting and providing great.
Do you know the health issues that have taken place because of the problems with this tower?
I don't know that there's any health issues.
There were some lawsuits brought against Verizon and Verizon actually re-sued the entire town of Pittsburgh. And they said, we have more money than you do, so you lose this, so they withdrew. In other words, the people, this is for the public good, right? You said, uh, you need all the requirements for the public good, did you not?
Absolutely.
Is it in the best interest of the public for there to be a tower that will adversely affect a lot of people and their organizations and the safety issues of our town?
We don't, and the federal government does not believe that there are any adverse effects.
The Federal Government Act of 1996 is superannuated and we all know this. Everyone in this room knows that it is way beyond the path of the flood. It is a long-lost act. And so, right now, I urge that the Select Board and, and the Planning Commission say absolutely no. Find another place where this is not going to impact individuals. The generator noise from it alone is gonna be a problem. People living in this area already have health issues. They're going to be impacted, some sitting right here tonight. So I urge you, please do not have it on this site. Look for something else. They have given you options and opportunities to look elsewhere. I urge you to do so, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Leah Parks.
Um, she wanted to be here, unfortunately, she was away, so I was gonna read her picture. Um, Leah Parks. Uh, the new 130-foot design does not address my primary concern, which is if the tower is located in a zone that does not permit towers. It is too close to residences, the Rink, the Red Fox Community School, and the fields that our children use regularly for sports and recreation. Not to mention, it will ruin the experience of biking, walking, running on the scenic historic rail trail. There must be more appropriate locations, yet it does not appear that Verizon is making an attempt to cite i- in a more, in a preferable location. Instead, they're ignoring the town's preferences and doubling down on a location that simply doesn't make sense. Leah Parks.
Bill Johnson.
Thank you. Um, a couple of questions and observations. As a driving landlord, I only got my notice like two days ahead of the, um, power. When, when did you officially publish it and put it out of your balloon test idea? And then, it was only for an hour, 12 to 1. And if you're scheduled or you have to be out of town for that hour, you missed it. So, pardon? Not according to the town website. Um, we didn't see it anyways. We went after it, got there in the afternoon and it was down. But, um, so I don't know whether that was, the last time around, it was up for a full day from 9 to 4 in the afternoon, and you definitely had a chance to see it. Um, but the, the other observation relative to that is you're talking about places along the street, but there's other parts of properties that are significantly impacted. One, I'm doing a housing development on Main Street, building houses. And when you get back into my property, off of Main Street, it is very visible for a 20-unit housing development that's in process. We're also doing a potential development for a hotel project on, across the street, up on the hillside on Main Street, almost directly across. And that would be a killer for that project because it is extremely visible, stares you right in the face. Um, so for people who are investing in this community, um, to, for its economic longevity, uh, the cell tower is not a good thing at this location. I suggest that the town hire, um, uh, I don't know if I'm using the right term, but a person, an engineer goes out and studies cell sites and where it makes good sense for him to be, um, and assess the whole town area and, and look at, well, might make reasonable tower sites. Not necessarily the best, but that, uh, don't impact very active areas and residential areas. And then sit down with the tower providers and the, the companies and maybe choose a better location. But this location is not good. We've been 10 years into the, um, developing the rail trail project and it was located where it is because of the scenic qualities and fitting into the landscape and so on. And after people have spent, you know, over a dozen years getting that in place, all of a sudden this tower comes in and that, I think that'd have a significant impact on the quality of what that trail represents. I urge the boards to, um, again reject this location.
Your, uh, camera, is it, is it, did I get that?
Thank you. Uh, for the record, I note that this is an exponentially added presentation than the one we heard a couple of months ago. It's, I appreciate the concessions that you have made. I don't think they go far enough. I think 130 feet is certainly from, uh, our house on, uh, Morse Road. It would probably be visible, but we don't know. We have here in Manchester, in Dorset, we, we rely on the visibility, the beauty of our surroundings for real estate, for our recreation business, just about everything. And to put a 130-foot tower in the midst of the view state simply doesn't exist. The one in Dorset is not hugely intrusive, but it's there, you see. This is very different, right in the middle of the view state, down the valley for a while. Second point, it's something that we have not touched in either of these hearings, and that is the public purpose that serves Hunter Park. We've had no presentation from, under, from their trustees as to how this fits the purpose of that charitable trust. And charitable trust is for the benefit of our community. We have no presentation of how this fits in. So with all due respect, I would ask you to, again, reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter Day-Sten.
I don't have any notes, so just extemporaneous. My first comment, I wanted to do the hazard and the aesthetics. My first thing is I don't see what this changes everything. It still violates our zoning. And that zoning is a, what, five, 10-year process between the planning and select board, back and forth, well-thought-out, where we want things, so I'm not so sure how this changes. As far as that hazard, there's a couple of things. I think the hazard is actually increased oil. You know, we're having a lot of 250 celebrations coming up in, uh, '75, '25, '26, '27. A lot of these drone celebrations all over the country and everything. Do we really want drones flying around the cell tower? I'm not so sure. And also, the HUD says it's a hazard in this. And so if you start to add other things to the tower that fall off the maintenance, uh, you know, equipment falls, there's a separation distance and it falls, so it gives that. So I'm not so sure that this isn't actually worse than their original proposal. The other, the other thing is aesthetics and I don't know how to say it, but, you know, the old expression, the old expression, lipstick on a pig is still a pig. You know, it's, uh, it's just not pretty. And, uh, I notice a lot of these are not from directly below. I mean, Hunter Park was designed in the back to have concerts where you open up the, I don't know what you call it, garage door gates, and you had a lot of good concerts here. And now these people are gonna be looking right at it, right out at it. And, uh, I don't think we'll ever have that again. I don't know who's gonna sponsor that. Will the cell tower right there, will VSO ever come back to Hunter Park? Will the cell tower right there, I think it will. VSO goes in Vermont, they're gonna come to a place with a, a cell tower. So I, I just hope the Planning Commission and Select Board sticks to the, sticks to their guns. You know, really looks at it because this violates our zoning. That was a well-thought-out thing for Dr. So, I, I am.
Thank you, Steve. Tina, if you had something in addition to say, because we don't have more time, um, that is not. Oh, okay, hold on, okay. We have a couple of people with their hands up. Go, and just let us know who you are.
My name is Karen O'Neill-Thompson, I'm the head of school at the Fox Community School. I would urge the Select Board and the Planning Commission to reject this. And I do want to correct you that it is close to a school. We are right on the edge of the Pen Road, right where some of your pictures are, were taken, where you can clearly see the tower, our children playing on those fields. We are giving the amount of footage that New Hampshire has said a school shouldn't have been. It's not where you're gonna be stopped, so I urge you to reject this.
There was a second page assigned in the, the same house. Hi.
Oh, wait, same line, it's something maybe.
Yeah, it ended in the third.
No, anyway, that's okay, this is a.
Hi, uh, DeMiro, uh, I'll be brief. I had the zoning conflict, but that has been covered very well. I would like to mention the view shed. Um, I do believe, especially every time I drive into this town, uh, bike into this town, that the view shed is really something very fortunate that we have in Manchester. Of course, all of Vermont is beautiful, but we have a particularly unique view shed with the Vermont Valley here. So, um, I would say we should work really hard and commend you all, um, for saving that view shed going forward. Um, I, I was wondering in your presentation if there was any way to bring the tower down to the tree level and then maybe consider it, but I don't know if it would be useful at 80 feet versus 130 feet. But that was one thing I was trying to be open-minded to say. The only way I could think it could work anywhere in the valley, in our valley, would be if it matched the tree level, something to consider going forward. And lastly, um, I would say, I think supplementing our local government is not a good move. I think in Vermont's state government, I work in state government, um, for the PUC, I know they're looking at reviewing and revising their public input process, and they're still doing that. And I think, I've been to six meetings now on this particular proposed location, and I've given input at five of them. And I don't think that's the kind of public input they're looking for. I think the PUC wants public input, but they want people to feel like they're being heard. So that's where I live. Thank you.
Uh, Wilbur.
I wanted to respond to Bill Cross's comments. The, the Planning Commission has had some input from two different RF engineer propagators, and we're probably gonna suggest to the Select Board that we move ahead with any some sort of arrangement with one of them to guide us in finding alternative locations, that then we can go back to Verizon and say, we don't have enough these. Um, and coupled with the data that, that Mr. Frisay just said, that will be a. And coupled with the data that Mr. Prissy just said, that will be a goal to us that they've already done, I, I personally think we can find a better location. And I know that we have a need, but I think that we can do even better for both the town and for Horizon.
If you have your hand up, just come right up and say the name, please, so I can get it on the record.
Hi, my name is Linda Benway, resident of Manchester. And I'm in mostly, I'm agreeing with just one of my advisors today. But I have a technical question, something that I don't know a lot about, so I'm wondering if the document from Horizon or yourself could answer this. Are you familiar with the term cone of shadow? Does that mean anything? Cone of shadow, does that mean anything to the dual idea? It's something that I learned about through the last meeting. And as you can imagine, a cell tower is a straight tower, and it emits its signal out straight. It's my understanding that there's this cone that goes from your emitters, for lack of a better term, down to the ground, creates this cone of shadow, where folks within that cone will not necessarily receive improved service. Does this sound familiar?
Yeah, I've never heard that term before. But that, that actually, the antennas are designed to broadcast on a 360, and they can be tilted depending on what the coverage requirement is. So you will get good coverage at the base of the tower, you'll get better coverage as you get farther away.
I wanted to make sure, I want to know whether those in that cone are going to receive improved service.
Oh, absolutely. And any proximity to the tower is going to get some benefit. As you go farther away, it dissipates with great distance, but we're talking, you know, a mile or two. If I might answer another question, because I think it's relative to that as well. The woman that asked about, can't you go to the tree line? The problem with that is that the trees themselves become a structural impediment to the signal. I will tell you that in, in a lot of towns, they say build it no higher than the tree line. And we're required to get variances, not here in Massa, I mean, Vermont, but in Massachusetts and New Hampshire, because it has to be above the trees to operate. In addition, your zoning bylaw, in order to minimize the amount of towers, wants to encourage co-location, meaning towers that are usable by multiple telecommunications companies. So the bottom antennas have to be above the trees as well as the top antennas. So we're very thoughtful about that, to design it to the minimum height necessary to get some benefit from it. Because if you build it in the trees, you get no benefit from it. It doesn't serve the, the benefit to the town, and it, it just has no value or so.
And I want to remind everybody, if you heard an answer to your question, it was time to repeat it.
Hello, my name is Carol Dupont. And basically, I agree with everyone about the beauty of Vermont. I don't question any of those statements whatsoever. My only concern about this is when I pick up medical, okay? And I'm picking up more medically now than I have before. Basically, you're being regarded with your cellphone, your microwave. Everything there is, is regarding your body all the time. This would just be one more thing, and this is the most of all. Thank you.
Any other person to speak? Um, if, so, we'll go back, Tina, if there's something random that you'd be having addressed, and I think it might be an aggregate.
I don't think Mr. Prissy mentioned the generator, which I understand is a large generator, like separately housed and fossil fuel fed, which is also another type of industrial, you know, aspect.
It's, it's a very smart generator, but these are very low-powered facilities. My suspicion is it's much less small than the generator already at the ice rink at the public safety building right next door, or town hall or next door. So it's, it's not designed to create a lot of power, just sufficient power. The other thing, too, with respect to generators, is it's the third source of power. These run on primary power. We will bring in primary power from the public, the, uh, the public electricity system. In addition, they'll have backup batteries that will last anywhere from 12 to 24 hours. So only in the event of a long-term power failure will these generators kick on. And I'll also tell you, if there's a long-term power failure, there's a public safety need, because all of the other facilities used to communicate cannot use, you know, you have cordless phones that run on a, a power source. You have internet that runs on power. So we have found that in long-term power outages, wireless communications are the only source of telecommunications, as opposed to all the other things that we could possibly use to communicate.
Okay, I, I've also read that intermittently cell towers, generators cause fires, that can lead to forest fires and widespread, you know, fire danger and hazard. So that's another concern, when you have, you know, tower near presidential, near all these buildings and, you know.
They don't cause fires, they're...
Strike by lightning perhaps?
No, it, it actually attracts lightning. They're built with very extensive grounding systems. And they're built with a lightning rod to attract lightning and then dissipate the lightning through the earth. So it makes a very large underground system. So it actually creates a safety mechanism with respect to any other residential or commercial or tall structure in the area.
The other thing, I mean, you mentioned that you want to be in this sort of close environment to the center of Manchester. And I guess the 5G, which are high millimeter, high-frequency type of antenna, need to be near producers, is that correct?
That's correct.
So in other words, any kind of interference, like, like trees or buildings, et cetera, can interfere with that signal. And yet it's a very strong sort of beamforming signal, which is actually used by the military, with military applications, and a type of weapon to disperse crowds, called active denial. So basically, 5G is going to be beamed down, you know, and people within proximity of that will suffer effects on it, particularly to the eyes. And especially, as many people have mentioned, children are more susceptible to any kind of toxins because they're developed, and there's spells in them. And when you see pictures of cell phones, where they've taken, I guess, you know, pictures that show how the radiation penetrates a child's skull versus an adult. This is just to make a gamble, and I just agree with everyone saying, if the coverage is needed, which it sounds like it is, let's just go back to the drawing board. I, I can see why you want that location, because it's minimal excavation, it's central, it, it checks the boxes for you. But we're the ones in this community in Manchester that would be living with it. And this, we'd be living with it for decades forward. And it's not just Horizon, people forget, there are four other carriers on there. So you have a ton of radiation, and it's...
Tina, I was hoping to stop now, because I think we would address that, those issues. Unless anybody else has, uh, their form of ability.
Yeah, I just, I have one more question. How do you plan to feed the site with power that the, that the site needs?
There's already power at the site for the power nation that we've tapped into to provide power to the site.
So you want me installing new lines, particularly anything overhead to feed the site?
So Scott, it's my understanding that the boards can formulate their response. Oh, sorry, one more question.
Actually, I have a question, a question and comment. Question is, what is the range for the, for cell reception from the tower? How far out does it really work?
I've had all kinds of maps to show that. It depends on the technology, whether you're talking on the phone or human data. And it also depends on the topography. Generally, it's a mile, a mile and a half, you know, so it would extend into Manchester Center and farther up to the, you know, the, the Thompson Park and the Hunter Park, and then going up north towards Dorset. You know, again, it's a low-powered facility, so it's not designed to cover very widely.
Right, exactly. So we can't just put it out there somewhere and have it work here?
I, I'm certainly going to look at the locations suggested by the planning commission. My suspicion is, is that they're going to be way out there.
I mean, I have, that's where...
Right, and so, and...
Anyway, from, from a mile to 25 miles, this, and then when you hear something like this, which is a lower capacity, if I may put words, as I understand, is about a mile to three miles.
Right, it, it, it's a very amorphous based on topography. This area is a little flatter, but, you know, it's not...
It changes with topography, with density, and all of those variables. Yeah, I understand that. I also wanted to make a comment, I'm hearing a lot about health. And the, it, it sounds, I know it sounds very science fiction-like, and it sounds like it can be very scary. But the fact is, if you go into research, there is really no evidence of health issues from cell taps. You get more radiation when you push your microphone, and you check that. So you may have reasons to warn or to relocate, if it's possible. But health is not one, and that is actually why the appeal on health is too much. We need to look elsewhere, because that is not accurate and it will lead to...
Uh, Mary? Okay, hold on one second, guys.
I just wanted to talk to you.
No, uh, hold on one second, because we can't, we have to have a used microphone. And let us know who you are, too.
My name is Rachel, Manchester resident. I'm actually, it sounds very accurate, and I'm happy to provide studies about it, any research, all right? Sure, maybe also, so, sure. Several people have said that it's, it's for, it's very, we have this, where people actually got sick, and that's even better.
I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, we're gonna not go over the same territory.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wanting to hear, mentioning that there's no health effects. And I'm just using that as an example to say, yes, there is, and there are people that did get sick. So I'm just basically debunking that, but...
Well, and I, and I encourage everybody to do their own research. I would advise them to get two different opinions, but I, I don't want to, I don't want to cover the same territory. And Sylvia?
Why aren't we going underground with some of this stuff, excavated world?
I, I'm not a, I'm not, you're looking at me, I'm not looking at you.
Well, we've done roof work. This is going back 15, 20 years, when they redid Bond Street, they tore it apart. And I may mention then, I can't remember who our town manager was, I think it was Wilson, Jack, Jack and Susan. I, and he came to see me, and I was on the ladder, and I said, why aren't we going underground? We tore up this whole street. Why aren't we putting cables down so we can thread future electricity through those cables?
There's, there's two things. One, you're talking about, you're talking about electricity, they're talking about transmitting radio waves. And as far as I know, having been in radio for many years, I don't think you can transmit radio waves from underground.
Well, it's something that we, that we should start considering. Take all these voids out of our vision and put them where we get the service. So we are visually unharmed.
All right, thank you. And Mary, we have a little bit, a little bit of time. And Mary, please keep your comments, it's something new.
I have one more question, which is, you keep saying there's low power, what's coming in? But the, you know, waves need to be penetrating the walls and everything else. Renounce all these two notions of low power and penetration.
Uh, when I say low power, it's the, both the frequency range and the power output are regulated to make sure you comply with federal regulations. It's not designed to cover a wide area. And, and like I said, AM radio covers 50 and 75 and 100 miles. This is designed to cover maybe a mile, a mile and a half in each direction, maybe a little bit more in certain directions, maybe less in other directions. It's designed to cover a very small area in Manchester. Just like that wireless microphone is only designed to cover a very small area. Or the Wi-Fi in this building, might make it to the parking lot, but not to the cemetery. All wireless telecommunications that we live with in every setting is all regulated to make sure that it's the appropriate power output for the frequency band and for the location. So we, we, we live in a wireless world. We, there are, there are already, there's already some coverage in Manchester from existing facilities, so...
I, I'm overwhelmed here. I do not have a smartphone, I cannot hold a smartphone, pain goes up my arm. I cannot get in a larger car, I have my own Havana syndrome.
Are there... Thank you, Mary. Are there any other people who wish to speak at this time? Leah?
Thanks, everybody. I tried to leave a short earlier in the interview, I had to speak, but I have a few other concerns. I'm the more official person on the, on the commission. And one of the things that I, I, you know, everyone, I mean, you do have the diagram that is not so impressive. There's only three antennas, not panels, and there's, there's a difference. As far as the tower itself goes, I have, you said, you said that, you said that there's activity houses. Far should go up the rest of the industry, is that correct?
In general, yeah, we can't go out 20, 30, we can't make it look like an artificial history.
I have seen, over in Northern Mass, I have seen some trees that were shorter in height, they were little cell towers. And they looked like real trees. They actually, I had a second, double, double, it's weird, and I realized it's a cell tower. And they ranged to about 15, 20 feet in some places, and they, it really does hurt, it was pretty aggressive. And, you know, the design you guys are offering is, is not quite as impressive. It's, it's visually, it's, it's a self-power. And it's, you know, it's, you know, that's about a little bit of a little stick on, but it's still a self-power. And I think that's a lot of, it's just a little, little side, it's going to be very, very dissimilar to the tower. Is there any way, you know, and I know that site's not this site, but when you do locate a site, is there any way to make it, you know, cluster of shorter towers, different heights? Maybe suddenly make it, you know, all the trees, different, like root trees, not just one, one old high tree. Speaking of all the same, you know, is there anything you can do to, to lessen the visual impact of the tower itself?
It's, uh, see, that's where your zoning bylaw, I, I, I'm going to answer bigger picture in that regard. Your zoning bylaw wants to minimize the number of towers in town. We've heard information that they don't want it anywhere because it's too close to something. So building more and smaller towers defeats the purpose of your zoning bylaw. And so we look at your zoning bylaw very carefully, it's not applicable. We're not in, not comp... We're not in not compliance with it because we're exempt from it. However, we look at your zoning bylaw very carefully. I have the zoning map here, if you'd like to put it up there. We're allowed in an industrial zone. Depot Street is in an industrial zone. There's not a tree along Depot Street. So anything that when we put in a permitted zone would be far more visible. The town center is a permitted zone. And so I could, if it were technically possible, put it in the middle of the road area. And, and that's a permitted zone. So, you know, we're very conscious about land use, and we're very conscious.
I want to interrupt you. We, I don't think anybody here said we don't want it anywhere. We want to find a place that works for both you and us, that's what we said, okay? So that's in that, you see, see that, okay? We, it's not we don't want improved communication, we do, and we know it's going to take the power to do it, we think we can find another place to work.
We're allowed to put antennas by right on the roof of the ice rink, if it, if it was satisfied, technical purpose. I could put it on the roof of town hall, because I think that's in a permitted zone. I could put, I could build a tower 20 feet away in the industrial zone, but that land's not available. So we've done, we've done, we've done a mention, and I'm certainly going to contact you through the town manager and get those names, but I'm virtually certain that they're going to be too far away from where the people are, where the users are. So, and you can't put it in the forest, because that's all restricted land, you can't have a commercial activity there. If we go into a rural agricultural zone, which is a permitted zone under your zoning bylaw, we're in the middle of a farm, and where there's no visual mitigation, and much closer to residences. So, you know, it's, I understand the difficulty, I understand the challenge, but I think we found an appropriate location. And, you know, I think you're going to find, as you start looking at other locations, you're too close to another location, you're too close to this. And we found actually an appropriate location. It benefits the town, it benefits the telecommunications, and it does not have that big of a video impact.
I think the fact that both, I don't know if that information, down the application or down the education, I give occasion, you know, I give occasion, we don't think it's what I wanted, but I said, I was, I said, just they had a 150, it's not suited for you, so I just, we want to free the market, to find the market, so let's try to work together, let's try to work together. This is important, we need to, we should do better, if we can do better, I think it's positive, so let's work in positive, so let's work together.
We don't believe that there is a better location.
Man, that's a, that's a common attitude, to start bringing one yourself to your problem, to say, I don't think that we can find this, that's a wrong perspective, that's a wrong perspective.
We've been looking at it for very long.
Do you want to look at it, too? And I encourage you to do so.
So I think that, no, I think we're gonna, we're gonna, no, thank you, we're gonna, we're gonna wrap this up.
But you made a mistake about something, speaking about, like rural agricultural does a lot of conditional use for a cell tower. You said it.
Yeah, he said it did.
Oh, did he?
Yeah. But again, I'm gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna bring this to a close, and I thank you very much for the presentation. Thanks, everybody, for your questions and being here this evening. I invite the planning commission to close their meeting.
We close our meeting. There are thank you, Mr. Select Board, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Wilbur. And the, before we close our meeting, we, both boards will formulate a response, and I believe submit those to Scott, and those will be transmitted to the right people.
Transmitted.
And they'll be trans, they'll, they'll be, well, sent to the right people. Again, thanks, everybody. We're, we're closing the meeting, and I move, or I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.